Good evening and welcome to Latrobe City Council's meeting which is being held at Kernot Hall in Moorwall tonight. Tonight's meeting will be held with all councillors and guests joining us in person. I'm pleased to welcome our Deputy Mayor, Councillor Gibson, Councillor Potter, Councillor Pugsley, Councillor Lund, Councillor Howe, Councillor Morgan, Councillor Barnes and Councillor Campbell. We also welcome our CEO, Mr Stephen Piersanti, and our executive team who are joining us tonight. I'd like to start the meeting by acknowledging that we're meeting here today on the traditional land of the Birakalong people, of the Kernai Nation, and pay my respects to their elders past and present. And if there is any other elders present, I'd also like to acknowledge them. Moving on to some housekeeping matters, we conduct our meetings under the governance rules currently in place. We welcome all members of the public attending both via the live stream and in person. I thank you for respecting protocols of the meeting which ensure that we can extend the appropriate courtesy and respect throughout our meeting tonight. If councillors could ensure they raise their hands if they wish to speak so that I can see it, remain seated to speak directly into the microphone, ensure they can be heard within the room and via the live stream, and when voting, raise their hands and leave them raised until I call their name. We move on to apologies and leaves of absence. There are no apologies tonight, all councillors are present. We now move on to item three, adoption of minutes from the council meeting held on the 25th of August 2025, commencing on page four of tonight's agenda. Do I have a mover? Councillor Gibson. Do I have a seconder? Councillor Pugsley. Do you wish, do I have any opposition? No. Councillor Gibson, do you wish to speak? No. Councillor Pugsley, do you wish to speak? No. Councillors, have I got a speaker against the motion, for the motion? Any councillor wishing to speak? Councillors, we still need to put it to the vote. Can I get a raised hand for those in favour of adopting the minutes? Councillor Potter, Councillor Pugsley, Councillor Lund, Councillor Howe, Councillor Morgan, Councillor Gibson, Councillor Barnes, Councillor Campbell and myself, I declare that motion carried unanimously. We now move on to the declarations of interests. Could councillors please declare any general or material conflict of interest regarding the matters being heard tonight? Councillors, I take it we have no conflict of interest? Okay, councillors, we now move on to, and I note you, Councillor Campbell, we now move on to item five, acknowledgements. Councillor Campbell, do you wish to make an acknowledgement?
I'd just like to acknowledge actually Latrobe City Council and the Mid Gibbsland Football Netball League for the great job they did out at Yunnar last Saturday. Well organised, the ground was fantastic. It was just a good day out. It was over 5,000 people that turned up. Everyone had a great day, so it was good to steal it from South Gibbsland. So we had to change the venue to Yunnar, so hopefully moving forward that we can have it more often. I'd just like to also acknowledge Pauline Tan To. I don't think she gets recognised for the job she does. She's been secretary for many years and she's up at four o'clock during the finals. She goes to every meeting, spot on, great, does a great job and is there for over 12 hours every day organising trophies, making sure everyone, the parking's right, you know, to making sure everyone pays at the gates and things like that. So it was just a great day out, actually. Thank you.
Thanks, Councillor Campbell. Councillor Pugsley?
Thank you and through you, Mr Mayor. I have a couple of acknowledgements today. Sorry about my voice in advance. The first one was a seminar that I actually went to a few weeks ago and it was life care and a suicide prevention session. And it was run by Mark Bateman and organised by Val Hemmings. And it was very, very powerful. It was around talking about suicide, which it hits all of us in one way or another. It was a fantastic event and very well done by Val for organising that. The second one, it actually opened on Saturday and it's by the Moi Rotary Club and also Moi Arts Collective. And it's a children's art show and it is absolutely fabulous. It involves a lot of schools in the 3825 area and I would encourage you to go and see it. It's actually really, really good. Thank you.
Yep. Councillors, do I have any other acknowledgements? I do have, do have a couple to make. We obviously had the North Gibbsland Football Netball League Grand Finals on two weeks ago. I'll start off by acknowledging the under-17s was won by Trogan Tyers United, which is a Latrobe City team. The C-grade netball was won by Latrobe TTU and they also won the reserves. So congratulations to TTU for winning all of those. I have to, I have to mention the Churchill thirds in the football. Finish of the game, they were ahead by a point on the scoreboard. The score umpires got together, then awarded a draw. And unfortunately in the overtime Churchill lost, but to see those players deal with that situation was tremendous, tremendous recommendation to the Churchill Football Club and those players. So hopefully they continue on. They, absolutely devastating having celebrated. So to the Churchill Football Club and their, their thirds, well done, that was excellent. Would be remiss of me not to mention the results on the weekend. Moi A-grade netball was playing in their third in a row netball grand final and they've now had a hat-tricks of wins, getting up by a couple of goals, which is just fantastic to them. And councillors, at the moment, we have the Latrobe Valley of Stedford running. It's been running for a week already. Absolutely brilliant. Went along over the weekend, on the Saturday during the day. Absolutely fantastic. I've been during last weekend and be remiss of me not to acknowledge the Trogan City Band who won the Brass Band Award, knocked off sunshine, which is always a great result when one of ours beats a, a city club. So congratulations to all those that are participating. It's been absolutely fantastic. And can I just say a big thank you to the organisers for putting it on. As per normal, it's running brilliantly, it's running smoothly and it's a great asset to the community. So thank you. Councillors, any other acknowledgements? Councillor Pugsley?
I did forget, forget to mention that councillors Steph Morgan and myself, we went to the Frisbee Championships that were in Trogan. And I, I don't think it's any secret, I'm not very sporty. And I actually think it's something that I could get on board with as well. I would dearly love to actually see Gibbsland have a team next year. So go out and practise your Frisbee.
Yes, the ultimate, ultimate Frisbee is an action-packed game. And I'm sure we can get a team together through the councillors. I'm sure there's a couple of councillors here who'd love to jump on board with it. Councillors, if there's no more public acknowledgement, we'll move on to the public participation. This is items where the public are invited to participate in the council meeting and we hear from the community. Tonight, there are no members of the public registered to speak, but we do have one question. Steve, I'll hand that over to you as CEO.
Thank you, Mr Smith. So we do have one question from Mr Dee Andrews and that is as follows. What specific red tape and green tape reductions have been implemented since the 16th of December 2024 motion on business development support was passed at item 12.2? And what measurable impact have these changes had on business approval timeframes? So in response, I can advise the council that, as you'd be aware, councillors, a report on this matter was presented to the 30th of June 25 council meeting outlining current work in progress, improvement initiatives and plans for future implementation. It was determined at that time that a further report will be presented to the December council meeting. Since December 2024 though, I would add the initial improvements that have been made include the following. Council has increased delegations to council offices related to planning permits. That occurred at the 26th May council meeting. This has resulted in more timely approvals of planning permits. Council has also committed to the Business Friendly Councils Initiative, driven by the Victorian State Government. This initiative will provide council with an implementation plan tailored to Latrobe City. Also, our business concierge service has been expanded to enable greater visibility and management of permits with council, as well as actions to increase promotion of the service to the business community. I would add though, in relation to the measurable impacts, these will be reported to council after 12 months of implementation of those changes. Thank you, Mr Smith.
Thank you, Mr CEO. Councillors, we now move on to item seven, or notices a motion. We have one notice a motion, item 7.1, which begins on page six of the agenda, and that is antisocial behaviour on local bus routes. Councillors, do I have a mover? Councillor Pugsley, I take it you're moving. Councillor Gibson, Councillor Gibson's seconding. Councillors, do I have any opposition? Councillor Pugsley, would you like to speak?
Just briefly, I might save my voice a little bit for later. I have had residents in just a short period of a two-day period come to me and say that they've been experiencing some issues on our local buses, not just in my local area, but also on the inter-town bus between Moi Mall and Trogan. Some of these have been, on the surface, not too serious. One of them was where somebody's loaf of bread was stolen, which, that was their lunch for the whole week. So that does have a huge impact. The second one is really quite concerning, where on a two-day period, a whole bus was basically harassed by one passenger on board. And it has serious consequences inasmuch as there were quite a few retired people on this bus. And one of the retired ladies, that is her own mode of transport, she relies on her neighbours to, if she needs a lift to an appointment. Otherwise, she catches the bus to do a grocery shopping and things like that. And she was too, and she is a very feisty lady by the way, and for her to be scared to actually go on the bus is really, really concerning. And also, we need to make sure that our public transport staff are actually safe as well. The, the bus driver on the second instance, when the whole bus was basically having an issue with this customer, he was a new driver. So we want to make sure that the drivers are safe in the workplace as well. And that's why I've put up this notion, a motion, sorry, that we advocate to the public transport, PTV, for additional resources of authorised officers on our Latrobe City bus routes. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Pugsley. Councillor Gibson, did you wish to speak?
Just quickly, please, Mr Mayor. I'm happy to support this because we're seeing too much antisocial behaviour occurring. And a lot of people, this is their only form of transport. And if they're too frightened to actually partake in the public transport, then it isolates them. Then you, you get into mental health issues and it just snowballs. So it's similar to the, the motion that we put up recently about PSOs at the train stations. So I'm more than happy to support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Gibson. Councillors, do I have a speaker against the motion? Speaker for the motion? Any councillor wishing to speak? Councillors, we've had speakers so we need to put it to the vote. All those in favour? Councillor Potter, Councillor Pugsley, Councillor Lund, Councillor Howe, Councillor Morgan, Councillor Gibson, Councillor Barnes, Councillor Campbell and myself, I declare the motion carried. Councillors, we now move on to item eight, strategic decisions, strategic items for decision. There are four items in this section. The first is item 8.1, adoption of the 2026-2029 Domestic Animal Management Plan commencing on page eight of the agenda. Councillors, do I have a motion? Councillor Lund?
I have an alt.
Yep. No worries. Can we put that up on the screen? Councillor Lund, could you read the addition? I note you, Councillor Gibson, and I note you, Councillor Morgan.
I'm just reading the addition.
Just the addition, yep.
Allocates 10,000 from the accumulated unallocated cash reserve for cat de-sexing trial programme.
Yep, perfect. Councillor Gibson, I noted you. Councillor Morgan, I'm going to you, I've been told.
Excellent. I would like to second this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Morgan. Councillors, do I have any opposition? Councillor Lund, would you like to speak?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just quickly, I've raised the alt to include that we allocate 10,000 from the unallocated cash reserves to a trial cat de-sexing framework. The cost of de-sexing is a real barrier for some people. And if we, if they can't afford the upfront of 240, you're less likely to, they are less likely to register their cats, which leads to more unregistered cats, fertile cats in the community. We know this leads to more abandoned and unowned and feral cats and puts more pressure on our pound. Last year alone, we processed over, sorry, 861 cats with almost half unable to be rehomed. Each cat costs us around $200 in officers' times and vet bills and care. So this small investment would fund around 40 procedures targeted to concession and pension cardholders. It's a practical way to, to support responsible pet ownership and reduce cost to council over time. This is also a data trial, which is, I think, the most important thing. So we'll be able to measure whether subsidy, subsidised de-sexing leads to higher registration rates and fewer cats ending up in the pound. So for me, this is about prevention. It's a very small upfront spend that we, that could save council money and reduce the cycle of abandonment and euthanasia, but also give us data to actually look at how we might do this differently.
Thanks, Councillor Lund. Councillor Morgan, did you wish to speak?
Yes, please, Mr Mayor. So I'm very happy to second this motion. I'd like to just start by talking about the actual plan itself. It's an outline of the services, programmes and policies that relate to the management of cats, dogs and other domestic animals in our community for the next four years. Some of the key actions in this plan include offering animal registration renewal notices by email to make it easier for pet owners and more efficient and cost-effective for council, maintaining adequate supplies of cat cages for community, maintaining accurate and relevant information on council's website, promoting animal welfare Victoria's responsible pet ownership programmes, and utilising social media to promote available and suitable animals unclaimed in the pound for adoption, with Pet of the Week posts to encourage engagement with the pound website and hopefully more adoptions. So we put out this draft to public consultation and during that process, we received a number of responses. And thanks to the community having their say, we can now, if this is passed, commit to reviewing the current cat curfew and consider a 24/7 cat curfew in the 2026-27 financial year, which is incredibly important for the whole community's wellbeing, but especially for the welfare of domestic cats. The alternate motion that's raised and the point that's raised there is about, as my fellow councillor just mentioned, allocating $10,000 to a pilot cat de-sexing programme to sort of measure the impact of accessible and affordable cat de-sexing in our community. And I mean, whether you love cats or you loathe them, I love them personally, cats getting de-sexed at a higher rate should matter to everybody. Accessible and affordable de-sexing, hopefully, means fewer stray cats, better animal welfare, more money in the pockets of people doing it tough, who are also cat owners. There'll be less impact on our native wildlife, fewer cats impacting wildlife and people's amenity, less money spent by council on impounding and euthanising strays, lowering the staggering amount of cats and kittens that are euthanised in our pounds. There's less workload and lower emotional and mental toll on the animal management staff. And hopefully, a healthier, happier and safer community for people and animals alike. So I think whatever way we look at it, making these procedures more accessible and affordable is a net benefit to our whole community. And I thoroughly encourage you all to support this alternate motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Morgan. Councillors, do I have a speaker against the motion, councillor, speaker against the motion? Speaker for the motion, Councillor Gibson?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm, I'm happy to support this motion. I think it's Councillor Campbell and I are on the Animal Welfare Committee. And the main complaints we have is barking dogs and roaming cats. So if you look at the actual policy that we're looking to put in place, it's actually reviewed about the barking dog complaint procedure and it's expanded it because often people don't realise, some do and some don't, how much their dog is actually distressing the neighbours, especially if they're out. So there is more detail in there what can and can't be done. Now, roaming cats is an issue that people have been bringing up and how it affects the, the wildlife and, and the neighbours. And hopefully, by actually having the de-sexing trial in, they're not going to be roaming as much because they're de-sexed. So I'm happy to support this. Because a lot in our community, whether they're dog or cat lovers, their pets are everything to them. And a lot of people, welfare recipients, elderly and the like, they do not have the, the money to be able to actually often take their, their animals to vets. But they don't have it for, to de-sex their cat. So without that, then you have the issue of cats roaming and making a bit of a nuisance of themselves. So I'm happy to support this. But I would also suggest to people, have a look at the policy because there's a lot in there, what constitutes a dog attack and how, about the supply of cat cages. So there, there is a lot in there. So I would actually encourage people to have a look and it might alleviate a lot more complaints.
Thanks, Councillor Gibson. Councillors, do I have a speaker against the motion? Speaker for the motion? Yep, Councillor Campbell?
I think this is a good idea. Now, working in a vet clinic for many years, you see so many cats come in. We had a great program actually when I was working there. Not as generous as this one, but it does work. People coming in looking for kittens. And if you put a de-sexing program and maybe get, if they get companies on board for free tick control, flea control, worming, working in with the veterinarians, I'm sure that they'll come on board as well. Yeah, so it's a great idea.
Thanks, Councillor Campbell. Do I have a speaker for the motion, against the motion? Any councillor wish to speak? Councillors, we've had speakers for the motion, so we'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Sorry, the alternate motion, sorry. Councillor Potter, Councillor Pugsley, Councillor Lund, Councillor Howe, Councillor Morgan, Councillor Gibson, Councillor Barnes, Councillor Campbell and myself, I declare the motion carried unanimously. Thank you, councillors. We now move on to item 8.2, Draft Latrobe City Streetscape. Councillor Howe, I note you, commencing on page 50 of the agenda. Councillor Howe, I noted you, and Councillor Pugsley, I note you. Yep?
I'd love to move. Thanks, Mr Mayor.
Moving, Councillor Howe. Councillor Pugsley?
Happy to second. Thank you.
No worries. Thank you, Councillor Pugsley. Councillors, do I have any opposition? Councillor Howe, would you like to speak?
Absolutely. Thanks, Mr Mayor, and through you. Once again, we're calling on our community to help shape the future look and feel of our magnificent city. The Draft Latrobe City Streetscape Strategy has been developed to enhance the visual appeal, functionality and environmental quality of the streetscapes right across Latrobe City. This draft's strategy highlights key long-term cost-saving opportunities and includes tailored recommendations to improve the appearance and the usability of our public spaces. It focuses on important areas such as increasing our tree canopy coverage, beautifying streetscapes, improving pedestrian cycling accessibility, streamlining, streamlining and rationalising infrastructure, introducing a consistent suite of street furniture and amenities across the municipality and ensuring cost-effect, cost-effective ongoing maintenance. This strategy has been two years in the making and I'd like to extend a big thanks to all the officers involved in developing this comprehensive plan. One of the key components of the strategy is, is the development of the consistent range of materials, paving types and street furniture to be used throughout our towns. This consistency will allow council to streamline maintenance operations, reduce long-term costs and improve the overall appearance and functionality of our public spaces. Part of the strategy also involves increasing the streets' canopy in our CBDs, which will bring important environmental amenity benefits. However, this will come at the cost of losing car parks in high traffic areas. So that's why it's important to hear from all sectors of our community. So we need to hear from our retailers. So what do you want your CBD to look like? We need to speak to our young people. How do you want your town to evolve in the future? And also speak to people who've lived there a long time. What insights can you, can you share based on your lived experience in Latrobe City? The more diverse feedback, the better the outcomes for the future and the look of our beautiful city. So let's work all together to make Latrobe City an even better place to live, to work and to visit. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thanks, Councillor Howe. Councillor Pugsley, did you wish to speak?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm really excited by this, by this community vision. And I believe that our residents overall will be as well. It's gonna really have a more cohesive look for all of our major towns in all Latrobe City. So people can see that we are all one city. I would really encourage all of our residents to study this plan and have your say, as Councillor Howe said, especially our local businesses, as we will lose some car parks due to tree canopies. This plan is our vision on how we want our towns to look, including the beautification of streets, streetscapes and increasing, as I said, our tree canopies and enhancing our cycling and mobility in our, in our streets. But most importantly, having a consistent look across all of Latrobe City.
Thank you, Councillor Pugsley. Councillors, do I have a speaker against the motion? Speaker for the motion, Councillor Gibson, and then Councillor Lund?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Although I would suggest that in the report it says Monash Way, that's not in New Borough, it's Monash Road. So I would suggest do that. But I, I too would encourage the, the traders to have a look. There's been a long time issue that we've been trying to address about the, the trees in the, the roadways and the issues that's had a lot of, I don't know, the mechanics might like it because they get a lot of business out of it. But I would suggest that people have a look at it because there are car parks that will go with all of this. And you also have a difference, there's three different proposed paving suites that you can actually have, which we're looking at. So I have my favourite, but I'm not everybody. So that's just one of the things that I would suggest that people have a look at. And I'd also ask them to have a look about the proposed roundabouts and whether they agree with it reduces demands for car parks. So there are issues to look at and that's why we're putting it out to the community for them to look at and give us their feedback. Thank you.
Thanks, Councillor Gibson. Councillor Lund?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Tonight, we're looking to release the Draft Streetscape Strategy for community consultation. Streets, sorry, streetscapes. Just about roads and footpaths, sorry. They're places where people connect and they shop and they spend time. And we want to get this right. We want to make our towns safer. We, they want, we want them to be more welcoming. We want them to be attractive for locals and visitors. But we also want to understand issues around accessibility. And we want to make sure that each town is allowed to keep its character and its identity. So it is really important that we do So it is really important that we do release this. But more importantly, we need to hear from you. We need you to have a look at it and tell us what you think. And like I said, accessibility, keeping towns' characters along with pathways and paving and lighting, all of those practicalities need to be considered. But it also needs to be considered from the aspect of connecting and shopping and where we spend our time locally and social cohesion and what that looks like and how that builds the fabric of community. So we're not adopting the policy tonight, we're putting the draft out so that our community can have our say. That feedback will shape the final version before it comes back to council.
Thank you councillor Lund. Councillors, do I have a speaker against the motion? Speaker for the motion? Any councillor wishing to speak? Councillors, we've had speakers, so we need to put it to the vote. All those in favour? Councillor Potter, councillor Pugsley, councillor Lund, councillor Howe, councillor Morgan, councillor Gibson, councillor Barnes, councillor Campbell and myself. I declare the motion carried unanimously. Councillor Morgan and then councillor Gibson. We move on, I'll note you both. We move on to item 8.3. Central Business District Outreach Program, commencing on page 105 of the agenda. Councillor Morgan, I note you.
Yes, Mr Mayor, I'd like to move the officer's recommendation, please.
Councillor Morgan's moving. Councillors, councillor Gibson, were you seconding? Opposing, okay. Councillors, do I have a seconder? Councillor Potter and councillor Gibson, I take it you're opposition?
Yes, please.
Yep. Gibson, okay. Councillor Morgan, would you like to speak?
Yes, please, Mr Mayor. So this is a new sort of approach to what has previously been brought to council. That was the Community Connectors Program. But council officers have gone back and done a load of work to really create a bit of a bespoke tailored program outline for our community. I think we're all aware of some of the issues that are being raised in the Morewell community and that something, many things need to happen. We can't attack this problem just through policing alone. And, you know, it's an important part of a broader approach to dealing with antisocial behaviour. But we also need to take a step to address this in a community-minded way to really address, quite frankly, multifaceted issue. There is no one answer to it. So this program that's being presented to us intends to be a proactive approach to addressing community safety concerns in partnership with other agencies. Officers have sought feedback from business operators in Morewell CBD and are continuing liaising with a range of partners, including the police, including working groups and committees. There's regular information being shared throughout the business community within Morewell and surrounds. And also state government agencies via Latrobe City Community Safety Advisory Committee and engagements with Advance Morewell. In addition to council's other programs, committees and advocacy efforts, this community outreach program would provide another layer in a holistic response to ensure everyone in our community feels safe and has the support they need. So we end up with a thriving Morewell that really can attack issues on multiple levels in multiple ways. So I just wanted to quickly thank the officers for their hard work in continuing to bring this back and bring this idea back to the table that we do need to address safety concerns in a holistic way. And I know that there are many community members from Morewell and around that are feeling frustrated that council is ignoring them in their sort of minds and abandoning them. And I want to ensure that we can address this in a multifaceted way. Because the Morewell community, the Morewell business community deserves to have that representation and deserves to have things delivered for them. They matter and I'm very happy to support this. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Morgan. Councillor Potter, did you wish to speak? Sorry, we've got a question. Councillor Pugsley?
I do have a question, please, through you, Mr Mayor. I understand that you and the deputy mayor may have had talks advocating to state government on this. Do you have an update for that?
I will throw to the CEO, who will have an update on it.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. So the mayor, deputy mayor and myself did meet with the Minister for Police and his advisers back in July. The team have recently corresponded with the minister. And at that meeting, sorry, I should add that there was, the minister did indicate that he was interested in attending Latrobe City along with the police commissioner. And so we followed that up with their office in correspondence as well as connecting with them to see if that was possible for them to honour that discussion and commitment that they would come to Latrobe City, but they're not confirmed as to yet when they would, if they would, sorry, and will attend. But they did make a verbal commitment at the meeting that they were very interested in coming and hearing firsthand the concerns from the community and also bringing the police commissioner.
Yeah, I will add to that too, that the discussion took place prior to the events at Mount Hotham, which is when, or Poopunka, which is when we were thinking that the minister would visit. So that's been a deterrent because the police commissioner is spending a fair bit of time up there. Yep, you had a second question councillor Pugsley?
You may have partially answered that, Mr Mayor. My second question was, how long does it normally take for them to schedule something in like this? What time span would you expect?
Throw to the CEO on that one?
Can vary. So depending on when Parliament's sitting and also what other activities are being undertaken at that point in time. So I think the mayor had made the comment about the tragic events that occurred and particularly what the police's focus has been recently. So it's something we will follow up though. So it can be a very short period, but it can also probably not answer your question very well. But it can take a number of months in terms of organising those sorts of activities, depending on the minister's diary particularly is the determining factor in my experience.
Yep. Councillor Campbell, question? Do you count? Just put your microphone on. Yep.
Through you, Mr Mayor. I think this will be to the CEO or one of the thing. Have the organizations like Anglicare and all that got back to council on partnering with Latrobe City in helping this area? And also, I just wanted to check, because in the report too, it says that in the CBD in Morewell, it just states that it seems to have settled down a little bit. Is it due to the cold weather and that? And what basis can you? Can you explain to me how those sort of environments have had an impact?
Mr CEO, I'll throw that one to you again.
Thank you, Mr Sir. I might pass the first part of that question to Mr James Rouse just in relation to the other agencies and the engagement that's occurred or not with them.
Thank you. And through you, Mr Mayor. We haven't had any follow-ups yet from any of those organizations. We've actually held off going back to them pending this report to council. I may start to answer the second part of the question and the CEO may wish to add. But our observations in relation to the CBD being a little bit quieter in terms of antisocial behavior is purely anecdotal. But what we have observed is an increase in some confronting behaviors at community facilities such as Morewell Library. So, you know, anecdotally, the observation is that potentially it's moved from outside to inside.
Yep, is that any question?
I think it's moved to Terrogan a bit.
Councillors, any other? That's enough questions. Councillor Campbell, no more questions? Yep. Councillor Potter, you?
I will reserve, please.
You reserve? Okay, done. Bear with me after all that. Councillors, councillor Gibson, you opposed. Do you wish to speak?
Yes, please. And I also wish to foreshadow if this is voted down, please.
Foreshadow, yep.
Okay. Look, as councillors know, my alternate motion was for a straight deferral for two months because the mayor and I and the CEO have spoken directly with the Minister for Police. And he was very keen to come down with the police commissioner. And they were happy to liaise with our Community Safety Committee, which has the inspector for police and a lot of the different police stations, the hierarchy there. And it's been working with all the CBDs because, yes, we've had issues in Morewell, but we have also had issues in the other towns as well. Now, why I was after the deferral is because we want him to look at what he can do, what he will do for us. Now, this is one area that we're looking at, but he has the ability and the knowledge on a whole host of different recommendations that could be done to help our area. So that's why I'm really keen to look at, okay, for the sake of two months, can we wait and hopefully we'll have the meeting with him? And because they're coming out of Poopunka a bit more than what they were. And the issue in Melbourne also has been settled down. So I really hope that my fellow councillors can see the wisdom of actually deferring for two months because we actually might get a better outcome for our community. And at the end of the day, that's what it's about. It's about getting the best outcome for our community and our safety. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Gibson. Councillors, do I have a speaker for the motion? Councillor Lund?
Thank you. Yeah, originally I was in support of the alternative and I do believe it does have merit. But I also believe that we need to get on with the job and this is something that has gone on for quite a while. So the fact that the original motion has gone over the line first, I'd like to address that first, I guess. So I do understand that information from the Minister of Police or the minister's office could value-add to the work that we're doing here. But it can come in at any time. It shouldn't stop us starting. Our community is raised genuine concerns and fears about the safety in our CBDs, particularly in Morewell and other high-risk areas in our towns. And this isn't about policing. It is a multifaceted approach that we need here. And it's about council leading the work to facilitate and support social cohesion in our towns and business districts. Strong, flexible outreach model can help address any social behavior while connecting people with the right supports. And that benefits not only the individuals, but also benefits the wider community and our traders. I agree that two months isn't a long time. But if I look back at how long this has gone on and it's come back and forth into the chamber in different versions, I think it is time that we do make a decision. So I am in support of this motion.
Yep, thank you councillor Lund. Councillors, do I have a speaker against the motion? Speaker for the motion? Any councillor? Councillor Howe?
I'm just speaking in general here. It's one of those things where I agree with everything that everybody said. Drives me crazy. Councillor Morgan, spot on. Councillor Gibson, got a lot of merit with what you're saying as well. I'm going to vote against this one. I'm going to support the alternate motion for the two months. But bearing in mind, this is coming from the May, the May meeting this started. So the two months is all I'll be giving. If it comes back, if it gets to the November meeting, that's where I'll be voting for action to be taken because we just can't keep kicking this can down the road. I just thought, let everybody know that's where I stand on it. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Howe. I'll actually have a question, councillors, before we commence and I'll throw it to the CEO. We had Latrobe Health Assembly at the direction of the local Member of Parliament. Minister Shing ran a program based on the antisocial behavior in Morewell and Moi. Have you got an update on that?
So that was a forum that was convened through the Latrobe Health Assembly that the minister had supported. The short answer is no.
Okay, thanks. That gets to that. Councillors, we'll go back to, we've had a speaker for. Do I have a speaker against? Speaker for? Any councillor wish to speak? Councillor Potter, you're reserved.
I did, Mr Mayor, and I'd like to talk now, please.
You certainly can.
I think, you know, now is actually the time to act. As councillor Howe said, you know, we've been doing this since May. We've seen, antedoteally, some improvements in the antisocial behavior in the CBD. But as it starts to warm up, I think we're going to expect that return back to those high-traffic areas around the transit hub, along Commercial Road there. And everyone's going to say, well, why didn't you do something while it was quiet? Why didn't you put something in place? And that's going to be a really good question and a hard one to answer. So now is the time that we need to do that. And by allocating the $30,000 from the unallocated cash surplus, we can begin a tailor-made reach-out model that works cooperative with lots of social groups around here, organizations that have that lived experience on the streets here in the Latrobe Valley. You know, waiting for the Minister of Police, yeah, he's got a great idea for the whole of Victoria. But he doesn't know what it's like to live in the Latrobe Valley. He doesn't know what it's like, what results we need that need to be tailor-made for us. So, yeah, great, he'll come in, he'll give us some high-level solutions. But we need to show that we're also working on the ground and working with these social welfare groups. We're already doing things. We'll already be able to talk about what are we seeing? What are our challenges that we're experiencing? What results are we actually getting? We know the model that has been in Frankston and Dannyong has been hugely successful for those two communities. And bringing in that and weaving it with our tailor-made response will be so much more powerful. So, you know, working in partnership with Victoria Police, launching the initiatives, showing what we can do locally and that we are doing it, that's what the police minister wants to come and see. He doesn't want us sitting here saying, please tell us what the answer is, because he doesn't have it. So in closing, I urge council to support this motion. Let's invest in the model that strengthens our community, that reaches out to people who actually need help, who works with the other organizations actually here and working on the ground already. And let's put some things in place to make sure that our CBD stays vibrant and is a lovely, safe place for people to come and hang out and go to cafes and shop and do their business. Thanks, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Potter. Councillor Morgan, we've had speakers against. Did you wish to close?
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. So I just wanted to note that we have actually been discussing this issue since February of this year. So that's over six months of this coming back and forward through meetings. We cannot keep deferring this issue. Do we wait until businesses in Morewell have been driven out and the CBD becomes a ghost town? I would hope not. But that's where some of our community members are feeling this is going, that they are continuously being abandoned and forgotten about by us, the council, because we have other agendas at play. And that is not fair to our community. I think I would like to also note that with the lack of police presence due to the events in the High Country, I think that also makes it really clear that we need to look at other approaches to addressing antisocial behavior in our community that do not rely on the police. The police have a very important role to play, but they cannot do everything. And I think part of what we need to do is actually focus on aspects of the community that aren't able to be supported through policing alone. We need to do something that is proactive and community-minded. And I would just like to say, I would never have thought so many of my colleagues would put so much weight into the opinion of a Victorian Labor minister. I think that's very interesting. I think the police minister can still provide value with his opinions by coming down to visit. I think that's absolutely worthwhile. But this program itself is not a police issue. Community safety, again, is not policing alone. And I think we need to do something for ourselves and do it as quick as we can because there is an issue that is happening right now. And we cannot keep waiting for a minister's diary to align, for a visit to happen here for him to go, oh, yeah, that's very interesting, I'm taking all these ideas on. Then do we have to wait and defer until he's had time to go back and think about it and then give us a direction? I hope not. We need to do something for ourselves. We need to do something for ourselves. I would really, really, really hate to see Moorwell, and honestly, all of the Latrobe Valley, be abandoned, to not thrive and continue to grow in the way that we all want it to because we have agendas at play or because we want to wait for some higher power to tell us what is the right thing to do. I think we all know what the right thing to do is. I think we're all here because we love the community and we want to see the best for Latrobe City. So let's actually do it. It's not that much, it's not that hard, let's do it. Thank you so much.
Thanks, councillor Morgan. Councillors, we've had speakers, we'll put the motion to the vote. All those in favour? Councillor Potter? Councillor Lund? Councillor Morgan? All those against? Councillor Pugsley? Councillor Howe? Councillor Gibson? Councillor Barnes? Councillor Campbell and myself? Councillors, that motion has been defeated. We had a foreshadowed motion. Councillor Gibson, I take it you're moving that?
I'm moving the alts, please, for a deferral.
Which is now the foreshadowed motion?
Yes, please.
Yep. I'll get you once it's up, that you read that motion out to the council.
Before I do that, I've got a question, please. Now, I believe I received the answer today, but the money that we're talking about, if it's deferred until the November meeting, that money will still be there, won't it?
Mr CEO, I'll throw that one to you.
So in the budget review item that's next in the agenda, I think, or coming up, in the agenda, there still remains, I think, $104,000, based on the officer's recommendation, if that's endorsed, available. So the report would be deferred. In terms of the funding still being available, that would be contingent upon council not spending all of that $104 in the next meeting and this one. And so the motion as it stands would be returned, based on this report being deferred, but the funding, there is funding available at the moment if council were to endorse the recommendation that's currently in the report before you tonight at the budget item. It would be subject, though, to if council had to make another decision to spend that funding somewhere else, then it wouldn't be available. So sorry to have a long-winded answer to that question.
As long as we don't bring another motion forward.
Yep.
No worries, thank you.
Yep.
You want me to read the motion, do you?
Yes, please.
That the report be deferred until no later than the November 2025 council meeting, pending a visit to Latrobe City by the Minister for Police and Community Safety to discuss the specific planning to address community safety in CBD areas.
Thank you, councillor Gibson. You're moving?
Yes, please.
Councillors, do I have a second? Councillor Pugsley? Councillors, do I have opposition? Councillor Potter?
No, no, sorry, Mr Mayor. I'd like to do an amendment. Can I do an amendment?
Yep, you can do an amendment. What was your amended motion, councillor Potter?
I'd like to provisionally allocate from the residual accumulated unallocated cash reserves the amount of $30,000 whilst we wait until November.
Yep, Mr CEO, can we get that organised? And do we need a break to do it?
Yes, might need a minute or two just to get the wording up on the screen, if that's all right, Mr Mayor.
Five minutes?
Give the team five then, all right, five minutes.
No, do you need it now or do you need a break?
Yeah, no, we'll take it now.
Take it now?
Yep.
Yep, okay. For those online or playing at home, we'll just wait a couple of minutes while the IT team jumps in and gets that amended.
You do. Good evening and welcome back to Kernod Hall. We have returned with an amended motion for item 8.3. councillor, we have a foreshadowed motion which was up. councillor Potter, do you have an amended motion? Can you read out the addition of your amendment?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. To provisionally allocate from the residual accumulated unallocated cash reserves, an amount of $30,000 while awaiting the report to be presented by no later than November 2025 council meeting.
Thank you councillor Potter. councillors, do I have a second? councillor Howe, thank you councillor Howe. councillors, do I have any opposition? No opposition. councillor Potter, did you wish to speak?
I just feel that this, if we're going to wait until November, we also want to make sure that when we get to November, that we've actually got the funds there ready for us to actually start the programme and get it running. So that's why I've added this amendment in. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
No worries, thanks councillor Potter. councillor Howe, did you wish to speak?
I'll reserve.
Reserve? Thank you councillor Howe. councillors, do I have a speaker against the motion? Speaker for the motion? Any councillor willing to speak? Wanting to speak, not willing, wanting? councillor Howe, it's back to you.
No, no, everybody wants the same thing, I think so. Let's put it to the vote.
Yep, no worries. councillors, bear with me, I've just got to make room. councillors, we've got the amended foreshadowed motion. We're voting to accept that as the foreshadowed motion. All those in favour? councillor Potter, councillor Pugsley, councillor Lund, councillor Howe, councillor Morgan, councillor Gibson, councillor Barnes, councillor Campbell and myself. I declare the amended foreshadowed motion accepted. Now councillors, we go back to that being the foreshadowed. The amended motion is now the foreshadowed motion. councillor Potter, you are automatically the mover of that item. Did you wish to speak?
No, thank you, Mr Mayor. I think it's all been said.
No worries. councillor Howe, you're happy? Councillors, have I got a speaker against the motion? councillor Morgan, you're speaking against the motion?
Yes, I would like to speak against the motion. I am again disappointed that we are once again delaying some real, real community impact in Morewell. And I'm just incredibly frustrated that we are back here yet again. To paraphrase Star Wars, Episode IV, Minister Carbine's, you're Morewell's only hope. I truly, truly hope he plans a visit very soon to Morewell. And I hope it's a good one because our community is being abandoned. They are being let down by those that they have elected and supported to be here to represent them. And I am so thoroughly disappointed. So I will be voting against this. I understand that there are many opinions around this table. But I just cannot feel comfortable supporting something that is yet again delaying an important community outreach programme in the Morewell community. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Morgan. Councillors, do I have a speaker for the motion? councillor Gibson?
I thought you were going to call me a different name. Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm happy to support this, this motion. And I note what my fellow councillor said. I don't agree. I do have quite a bit of faith in the police minister, whether he's Liberal Labor or anything. The conversation the mayor, CEO and I had with him was so positive. And he has looked at the issues for Frankston and Dandenong. And he has gone into bat and helped them. So I believe that, I believe him when he, he said he was really keen to help us. So I've got no reason to think that he'll do anything other than what he said. And he, he's the minister for police and community safety. And this is what we're talking about, community safety. Now, I believe whether he lives here or not, he actually has got the ability and the experience to actually know what can and can't work in our communities. So I, I am putting a lot of faith in him. Mind you, only to November. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Gibson. Councillors, do I have a speaker against the motion? Speaker, councillor Lund?
I wasn't going to, but I think I have to agree with councillor Morgan here. This has gone on for a long time. And we are waiting for a silver bullet solution from a minister, a minister for police and community safety that hasn't even booked a time in yet to come. And these people, their diaries are extremely busy. So I highly doubt that we are going to see that visit between now and November. And even if we do, we should be able to start the work now. And whatever comes out of that visit, whatever magic solution they have can be added into our framework, into our work as we go. You know, we're always open to value adding and taking advice from experts and professionals in their field. But it should not be delaying the work. And I do agree that I think there is a sense of frustration in Morewell particularly, that a decision can't be made. It has gone on since February. Thank you for checking that councillor Morgan. And it's just time to move on this. I also want to acknowledge councillor Potter for her amended motion to ensure that even though we are delaying this, we will possibly be delaying this for another two months. But ensuring that we have the money and the foresight to consider that. You know, because I think sometimes we're delaying things without considering all the full repercussions. I do appreciate that councillor Gibson does feel that we might have some more information or some more support come our way. But starting the work now doesn't, you know, doesn't mean that we can't include that when it does come. So I'm supporting councillor Morgan on this one.
Thanks councillor Lund. Councillors, do we have a speaker for the motion? councillor Pugsley?
I wasn't going to say anything either, I'm sorry. But I'm sitting here and I'm listening to both sides of the argument. And, and I understand how my fellow councillors might be disappointed. But I really believe that it is important that we get this right, that we look at the options. It's not a one size fits all solution. We are a little bit different here. And I sincerely hope, maybe naively, that the, the minister will, will have a solution for us. I mean, that's what he specializes in. That's what his advisors, I assume he's got some advisors there that'll help him come up with a solution. It is important that we have the right solution that we can use across all three of our towns. I know that Morewell is experiencing some problems. But Moi, Moi, New Borough and Terrelegan, we have as well. And we have brought in some solutions, like some community policing. And we have had some really good results with that. It's not the total solution. It needs to be a few things that we look at. But we need to make sure that we get the solution right. I feel like we don't want to go in the wrong direction. We don't want to spend council resources, officers' time and our money, because we don't have a lot of money, to, to, in the wrong direction. And that's why I really would like to see what, what comes of the, the potential visit. And you're right, we can't let this go forever. So on November, I'm happy for it to come back to November, okay? But, and hope that we can get something a little bit better for our community. Our community deserves better than what we've got right now. And we want to make sure that we have the right plan in place. We want to make sure that the right avenues are explored. We want to make sure that our money is put to the best use to get the best outcome for our residents. So that's why I'm, I'm a fan of this motion. I just, we need to make sure we get it right.
Thank you councillor Pugsley. Councillors, do we have a speaker against the motion? Speaker for the motion? Any councillor wish to speak? councillor Potter, we've had speakers against, did you wish to close?
Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Sorry, I tell a lie. councillor Howe, no, you did not reserve. That was last time, I'm going over notes. Sorry councillor Potter, you get to close.
Oh, second time. Thank you, Mr Mayor. I just want to sum up what I've heard. And I completely understand the frustration that our Morewell councillors have expressed tonight. I agree with that as well. But if we couldn't get the previous motion through, this is an expected thing. So, you know, let's bring it into November. Let's make sure the money's there waiting for us when we arrive in November and the report with a full outcome of what we can do and how we're going to do it and be able to start in November as we head off. So I think, I think this is the best that we can come up with at the moment, based on where we're at. So thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Potter. Councillors, we've had speakers, so we need to put it to the vote. All those in favour of the amended alternate, amended foreshadowed motion? All those in favour? councillor Potter, councillor Pugsley, councillor Howe, councillor Gibson, councillor Barnes, councillor Campbell and myself. Those against? councillor Lund and councillor Morgan, I declare the motion carried. Thank you councillors. We now move on to item 8.4, partial road discontinuance. Matthew Crescent, Terrelegan commencing on page 113 of the agenda. Councillors, do I have a mover? councillor Howe's moving. councillor Pugsley seconding. Yep. Councillors, do I have any opposition? We're on item 8.4, partial road discontinuance, Matthew's Crescent. Do we have any councillors against? No. councillor Howe, did you wish to speak?
Oh yeah, just, just very briefly, thanks. Mr Mayor, a pretty straightforward motion in front of us tonight. Yalambi Village has formally contacted council with a request to discontinue a portion of Matthew's Crescent as a public road and to consider selling that land to, to them. The intention is to improve the safety within the village and create a more secure environment for the residents. We've had our legal representatives reviewed it. Our internal officers have also looked at it and found that there's no legal risk associated with the road discontinuance. We have had the land independently valued by camp, independently valued in preparation for a potential sale. So as part of the process, a community consultation will be undertaken in line with the council's community engagement policy to ensure transparency and community input before any final decision is made. So yeah, happy to, happy to move this one. Thanks, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Howe. councillor Pugsley, did you wish to speak or reserve?
Reserve, please.
Reserve? Councillors, do I have a speaker against the motion? Speaker for the motion? Any councillor wishing to speak? Back to you councillor Pugsley, you're reserved. Did you wish to speak?
No, thank you.
No worries. Councillors, we've had speakers, we'll put the motion to the vote. All those in favour? councillor Potter, councillor Pugsley, councillor Lund, councillor Howe, councillor Morgan, councillor Gibson, councillor Barnes, councillor Campbell and myself. I declare the motion carried unanimously. Councillors, we now move on to statutory planning in item nine. There is one item in this section, item 9.1, proposed planning scheme amendment, C151, Latrobe City signage strategy, commencing on page 121 of the agenda. Councillors, do I have a mover? councillor Lund? Councillors, do I have a second? councillor Howe? Councillors, do I have any opposition? councillor Gibson's against. councillor Lund, would you like to speak?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The item asks us to endorse the draft signage background review and the, and the Latrobe City signage strategy. It also seeks authorisation from the minister for planning to prepare and exhibit amendment C151 to the Latrobe Planning Scheme. The need for this work comes from ongoing challenges in processing signage-related permits, planning permits for many developers, businesses and landowners. The requirements are unclear, particularly when a sign triggers a permit. A dedicated signing strategy will give businesses clear practical guidance, improve the quality of the permit application and create greater consistency across the region. Amendment C151? Will go on exhibition, giving our community and stakeholders the opportunity to provide some feedback before it returns to council for, for final consideration. To sum up, this is about providing clarity, cutting red tape and improving outcomes for both businesses and the community.
Thank you councillor Lund. councillor Howe, did you wish to speak or reserve?
I will reserve this time, thanks.
Reserve? No worries. Thank you councillor Howe. councillor Gibson, you opposed?
I am. Look, I, I agree with parts of this. But some of it, I think we've gone a bit too far. Painted or fixed signage on windows should be avoided. Parts of this business identification signs should form part of the overall design of the building as to not be visually dominant. If I had a business, I bought a, a business and I wished to actually display what I'm actually selling in the shop, well, I would want to be able to put on my window what I want, as long as it meets a certain standard, that it's not rude or, or anything like that. And I feel, I, I get the intent, I get that. But I feel that we are going too far. When, when we're telling businesses that we, you can't do different things on their own premises, I think we're going too far. I, I understand about a standard and everything else, I get that. But it's how far we're going. I, I, I don't agree with, and some of the other parts in it. So I would suggest to businesses to have a look at this. And if they agree, well, that's fine. But if they don't, if they feel like myself, then they really need to actually say so. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Gibson. Councillors, do I have a speaker for the motion? councillor Pugsley and councillor Morgan, I note you both. Yep. councillor Pugsley?
I like the, the basic idea. I like the idea of this proposal. I like the idea that I believe officers are just trying to make it easier and simpler for businesses to know when a permit is true, when they need a permit or when they don't. And when you're, you're trying to, you know, set up a business and let's face it, not all of us are great at paperwork. If you have a guide that tells you, right, if you go for this scenario, you won't trigger a permit scenario. And when you sit, I imagine when you're setting up a business, it's very daunting and there's a lot of paperwork. I like the idea that there's a bit of a guide there, that if you do it this way, it won't trigger a permit. That's what I really like about this. You know, I want for red tape to be cut back. I want it to be easy and good to do business in Latrobe City. Or I should reframe that and say, the best it can be, the best we can make it for businesses to thrive in, in our Latrobe City. So I'm a fan of it. And I would really encourage, I really hear what councillor Gibson's saying. And I would really encourage for our businesses to have a look, especially our experienced businesses. And they can give us, this is, this is just to go out for feedback. And they can give us some feedback and they can tell us, okay. We think that, if they think that it's too restrictive, then that's when they get to have their say. And that's when we will take it on board. And that's the best way, it's collaborative. They get to have a say, experienced businesses get to have a say about how they think that we can do it better. So I'm a real fan of this because A, the businesses get to have their say and give us some really valuable input. And B, anything to make it easier and, and hopefully the best to, to run your business in Latrobe City. We want to encourage you to run a business in Latrobe City and thrive. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Pugsley. councillor Morgan?
Yes, I'll just briefly speak in favour of this motion. This whole Latrobe City signage strategy, that was mouthful. It's come from the council identifying existing issues faced by businesses, landowners and developers when going through signage-related planning permit applications. We, through this, we are trying to implement a citywide signage strategy that makes sense for everyone across the board, that has greater guidance for business owners and improved efficiency in the planning permit application. It also aims, I guess, not aims, but the outcome of this will also be to make our shopping precincts more accessible. You'll be able to see into shops and get a better understanding of what is inside. You will also feel safer. There will be more passive surveillance looking into shops and also outside of shops. To make a better, more amenable CBD across all of Latrobe City. So I think there are a lot of benefits that come out of this. And the red tape, cutting that, is just one of them. So I'm in favour of this motion. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Morgan. Councillors, do I have a speaker against the motion? Speaker for the motion? Any councillor wishing to speak? Yep, can I ask a question if you put your microphone on? councillor Campbell?
Thank you. Is this some, a change to clause 52.05 of the Act?
I will direct that to the CEO.
Oh, sorry, through you, Mr Mayor.
Yep. Steve?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'll pass that question to Mr Roald, to your manager, Regional City Planning and Assets.
Through you, Mr Mayor. councillor Campbell, it's clause 52.05 of the planning scheme. So it's, it's the regulations that conform the act. So they inform the act. So it's clause 52.05, Latrobe Planning Scheme.
So this is what the change is through you, Mr Mayor? So this is the clause that's been changed, is that correct? I just want to double check.
Through you, Mr Mayor. So planning permits are triggered under clause 52.05. This also provides a strategy that would be, well, that's subject to council feedback and council endorsing in the future, is that it will adopt a strategy that will provide guidance about what sort of planning permit applications is to make it as easy as possible for people to understand what is supported and what isn't discouraged to a certain extent. There's also specific local planning policy proposed on the scheme as well that gives more guidance to business owners, real estate, et cetera.
Thank you.
Yep, that answered your question? Yep? Okay. Councillors, do we have any councillor wishing to speak? councillor Howe, you're reserved.
Oh no, I will speak briefly, thanks, Mr Mayor. And again, I agree with everything that everybody said. But this is, just to address councillor Gibson, what she said. This is the opportunity for, for our businesses and our business groups. So we want to, we want to speak to our, we've got our Latrobe City Business Chamber that we work very closely with. We need to sit them down and talk through it with them, business owners, developers, everybody, shoppers, okay? What, what makes it easy for you to shop? What sort of signage do you want? And, and what will come back, I think, will be differently. And it's up to us as councillors to really, we want strong engagement with our community. This is, this is our opportunity, we need to drive it. And I know I will be, I'll be visiting all the businesses I know and I want to encourage them to put in a submission. Because once, once we adopt whatever the final one looks like, it's too late for them to, to come to us with their thoughts then. I will say that the whole process, from my understanding, is to receive the ministerial authorisation to go, go to the community. It's going to be about eight weeks. So, which is good, so we can get the other one out of the way with the streetscape. And then we can go back to our, our business owners and everything in, in six or eight weeks and then ask their opinion on this. So, yeah, so happy to support it. Thanks, Mr Mayor.
Thanks councillor Howe. councillor Lund, we've had opposition, would you like to close? It's been a long journey to get back to you councillor Lund, sorry.
Nearly gone to sleep. But no, that's, no, I won't, sorry, no, thank you. I'm happy to go.
No worries, thanks councillor Lund, appreciate it. Councillors, we've had speakers, we've got to put it to the vote. All those in favour? councillor Potter, councillor Pugsley, councillor Lund, councillor Howe, councillor Morgan, councillor Barnes and myself. Those opposed? councillor Gibson and councillor Campbell, I declare the motion carried. Thank you councillors. We now move on to item 10, councillors' items for discussion, items, corporate items for decision, sorry. There are three items in this section. The first item is 10.1, end of year financial results and accumulated cash surplus, commencing on page 217. Councillors, do I have a mover? councillor Pugsley?
I've actually, um, actually I'm a bit, can I have some clarification?
No, you councillor Gibson. councillor Pugsley, you've got?
I originally had it alt, but has that become the? Yeah, thank you. I got a bit confused there for a second. I'd like to move an alt, please.
Move an alt. councillor, councillor officers, can we please get the alternate motion placed up on screen, please? And? Still waiting. It might be page two that the alt is on. Council officers, could we flick to page two? Are we still trying to find it? Just bear with me, we've got to read through the, I think the alt start, yep. councillor Pugsley, you're moving an alt. Can I get you to read through the alternate part of the motion? So it's a substantive motion, stays the same, and there's added points five, six and seven. Could you read through those in the next half hour, please?
Happily, I'm glad I don't have to read the whole lot. So point five is notes the request from Gipstown Reserve Commitment Committee of Management Incorporated, old Gipstown Heritage Park, for ongoing financial support for heritage buildings, maintenance, capital works for $50,000 to be incorporated into Latrobe City Council 2025/26 budget to ensure the park remains viable and open in the future. Point six, receives a future report by no later than the December 2025 council meeting that provides council with additional information regarding the funding request.
that provides council with additional information regarding the funding request, including, but not limited to, the following. A, operations of the park. B, economic benefits to Latrobe City associated with visitation to the park. C, benchmarking against alike facilities in other municipalities. D, the risks and opportunities associated with the provision of ongoing funding up to an annual amount of $50,000. Point seven, provisionally allocates from the, I have to say this slowly, sorry, the residual accumulated unallocated cash reserve, an amount of $50,000 whilst awaiting a report on the park.
Thank you councillor Pugsley. Councillors, do I have a seconder? Councillor Howe is seconding. Councillors, do I have any opposition? Councillor Pugsley, would you like to speak?
Just briefly, Mr Mayor. I think it's really important that we make sure that our tourist attractions in Latrobe City are helped to stay viable. Old Gipstown, or well, as we locals call it, I think everybody really calls it, Old Gipstown, is an asset to the Latrobe Valley. It's at the gateway of our local general council area. It preserves our history, it's got some lovely, it's got First National Bank there, it's got some old pictures, theatres. They, they have a whole, councillor Gibson and I actually, at the start of the year, we went to the Volunteers' Connection event and we were actually fitted into old worldy dresses, thank God we didn't have to wear corsets, but, and it was an amazing experience. And they have, it is an amazing experience there and our history needs to be preserved. But I really, really do believe that the impact of our local economy, the argument is there for the viability of the amount of money that will come into our community. It, and I'm really, I really am looking forward to seeing the report come back because I really, I'm sure that it will be justified of the spending of this money. The numbers, point seven, really revolved around, I wanted to make sure that the money was still there when the report came back so that we could still assist Old Gipstown. Thank you, I think I've said enough.
Thank you councillor Pugsley. Councillor Howe, did you wish to speak?
I'll reserve this though, thanks, Mr Mayor.
Reserve, yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillors, do I have a speaker against the motion? Speaker for the motion? Councillor Gibson? Oh, sorry. Do I have a speaker against? No, no, all right, so it's councillor Gibson, then councillor Campbell, then councillor Barnes. Okay, councillor Gibson, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, considering there's two others that want to speak to it, I'll just speak to part of it that's in my ward. I'm really happy to, to see that we're sharing across the municipality, sorry. But I'm delighted about the Northern Reserve, New Borough, the multi-use billion detailed design and money is being allocated from the accumulated cash surplus for that. This has been a long, long-winded push that the football club and myself have been trying to address for a number of years. And as we all know, for any, any project to actually get the funding, they want, the, the government wants detailed design. So the money in this is actually allocated for them to have detailed design. So I'm delighted on that and I hope I haven't stolen the thunder of the other two. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Gibson. Councillor, councillor Campbell, you wish to speak?
Yep, through you, Mr Mayor. Yes, look, I agree with the way this is written. I'd like to see a bit of accountability, I'd like to see these reports and what's going to come back and, and how it's going to increase people coming into the city and how, what strategies and if they've got a business plan, how are they going to bring it up to scratch because it is very rundown at this point in time. So I'm hoping that this money, injection of money will help to reinvent it and also moving forward, just like to see what Heritage Australia and Heritage Victoria are also contributing to this, to this area because they need to also realise that this is something in Gipstland and it'd be good to see what Coal Creek does, I know Sovereign Hill's a little bit different, but what those other entities do to raise funds to keep those places going, yep.
Thank you councillor Campbell. Councillor Barnes, I noted you.
Through you, Mr Mayor. Like I agree with the rest of you, it's, it's the gateway to Latrobe Valley really, like councillor Jaiam was saying. But it's also bringing people up from Melbourne, you know, out different areas too. So I think the money they get is they can help do some renovations or whatever they've got to do, to spend a little bit of money to bring it up to scratch, I think it can be a great thing for the valley because we're about tourism and bringing people into Latrobe Valley, so that would be a good place to start.
Thank you councillor Barnes. Councillors, do I have a speaker against the motion? Speaker for the motion? Speaker for the motion, I've got councillor Potter and then councillor Morgan.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yep, okay. So it is exciting that we actually have a surplus in the budget this year and that represents the fantastic work that our offices have done with their financial management, which gives us the opportunity to invest in more projects that actually matter to the community, projects that add to community health, to connection, to upgrading the facilities, a new public toilet, I love that. And the sporting room changes that councillor Gibson was talking about as well. So not only the one in New Borough, but also Yonah Recreation Reserve as well. So that's very exciting because once again, they've been waiting years and years and years for that. So to have a detailed design of what that's going to look like will be very exciting. I'm also quite keen to see the report coming back to council regarding the request from Old Gipstown. So while Old Gipstown is a valuable tourism site, we cannot responsibly allocate unbudgeted funds without a clear strategic direction and proper assessment of the priorities. So this situation for me really highlighted a broader issue. We currently lack a structured approach to our heritage buildings and the priorities around those. So sites like the Old Methodist Church are facing really uncertain future. So without that clear guidance, an important historical assets may be deteriorating or they actually may be lost. So before committing sufficient funds, I really think council needs to look at establishing a heritage committee to review and set priorities for our heritage buildings. So this would provide some transparency, expertise and a consistent criteria for funding and maintaining, for maintenance decisions across all our heritage sites. So by requesting the report back, we're ensuring not only the decisions about Old Gipstown, but any other future heritage funding are informed and accountable and aligned with our long-term objectives. And we need to know not only how these funds are going to be used, but how investment in these heritage sites fits into a broader strategy that's going to protect our cultural history and maximise the community's benefit. So reporting, supporting this report back is not about delaying, it's about ensuring our heritage, our tourist assets and our rate payer funds are actually managed responsibly and ensure that any future deep funding provided delivers genuine value to our rate payers. So I urge that we support this motion as it stands. Thank you.
No, thank you councillor Potter. Councillor Morgan, would you like to speak for or against?
Um, for.
For, thank you.
I echo a lot of what my fellow councillors have said, but I also just want to get back to the core of this motion and that is us being able to use funds to implement the design and construction of a public toilet at Immigration Park just there, which currently does not have a toilet for the community to use. There's beautiful parklands and a playground, but there is no toilet. And it is the next facility to be built as outlined in the public toilet plan 2023 to 2033. So it is time it gets built. So I'm thrilled about that. This will also fund site remediation works at the Morewell Depot to remove decommissioned infrastructure and also fund an enhanced maintenance programme to further support local sporting facilities, to upgrade their ovals, to ensure that they get the support they need to put on great games and do what they do. I'm not a sporty person, but I'm all for it. And I think the alternate points in this motion do highlight, as councillor Potter mentioned, the need for our investment in heritage. But to do that in a mindful way, where we actually look at the impact to our community, the impact on our budget, what do we need to do to ensure our community facilities and also our local heritage is supported in a very thoughtful, mindful manner? So happy to support this.
Thank you councillor Morgan. At that point, councillors, I'm going to hold on the meetings, we've lost the CEO and councillor Pugsley and one of our general managers. Yep, so we'll take a five-minute adjournment and we'll come back after that. Thank you councillors. And welcome back to Kernod Hall, for those watching online. We've just had councillor Morgan has spoken for the motion, the amended motion. Councillors, do I have a speaker against the motion? Do I have a speaker for the motion? Councillors, before I go to councillor Howard, reserved, I'd just like to point out to the community that the figures there are top of the range figures, not actual figures. Our offices have allocated enough money to make sure that the funds are there so that we don't run short and have to come back. So when you're looking at those figures, that is not what it will probably cost, we'll be able to do it for less. Councillor Howe, you're reserved, back to you.
Oh, I think everybody's said everything, thanks, Mr Mayor, so happy to pass.
Thanks councillor Howe. Councillors, we've had speakers, we'll now put it to the vote, all those in favour. Councillor Potter, councillor Pugsley, councillor Lund, councillor Howe, councillor Morgan, councillor Gibson, councillor Barnes, councillor Campbell and myself, I declare the motion carried unanimously. Councillor Gibson, you're now leaving us, thank you very much. We'll just wait for councillor Gibson to leave and then we'll move on to the next item. Thanks councillor Gibson. Councillors, we now move on to item 10.2, Chief Executive Officer Employment Matters Committee Independent Chair Recruitment Process. Councillor Lund, I note you, moving? Moving. Councillor Howe, seconding. Thank you. Councillors, do I have any opposition? Councillor Lund, would you like to speak?
Thank you. We are being asked to authorise the General Manager of Organisational Performance to commence the recruitment process for an independent chair as Kelvin Spiller's term is coming to an end. Filling his role is important to ensure continuity of leadership and governance oversight within the committee. An independent chair is critical because they bring impartiality, objectivity and an external perspective, helping the committee to make decisions based on merit and best practice. You okay?
You're right councillor Pugsley?
Best practice rather than internal influence. The new chair needs to have relevant experience and capabilities, including governance knowledge, understanding of local government processes and the ability to facilitate robust discussions. I'm looking forward to seeing who this recruitment process brings forward and the expertise they will bring to the role. I also want to acknowledge Kelvin for his time, his professional guidance and dedication as chair. His contribution has been invaluable in supporting strong governance and the staff, and staff confidence and he's certainly been very supportive of the committees, sorry, the councillors in that committee as well. So I, yeah, I extend gratitude to Kelvin for his professional work.
Thank you councillor Lund. Councillor Howe, did you wish to speak?
Just briefly, councillor Lund said most of it, but yeah, I agree, as a current member of the committee, I also like to extend my sincere thanks to Mr Spiller for his dedication, his wise counsel and his professional leadership, especially in my mayoral year, I found, I found his advice invaluable. His contributions had significantly supported the committee's effectiveness and made our responsibilities much easier to fulfil. And also note that the motion does, does note that a report will be brought back to council at a later date to consider the appointment of the new independent chair. Thanks, happy to second and thanks, Mr Mayor.
Thanks councillor Howe. Councillors, do I have a speaker against the motion? Speaker for the motion? Any councillor wishing to speak? Councillors, we'll put it to the vote, all those in favour. Councillor Potter, councillor Pugsley, councillor Lund, councillor Howe, councillor Morgan, councillor Barnes, councillor Campbell and myself, I declare the motion carried unanimously. Councillors, we now move on to item... Councillors, we now move on to item 10.3, Policy Renewal Programme, Policies Requiring Minor Updates Ending or Updates or Ending, commencing on page 229 of the agenda. Councillors, do I have a mover? Councillor Pugsley's moving. Councillors, do I have a second? A councillor Morgan? Councillors, do I have any opposition? Councillor Pugsley, would you like to speak?
Just quickly, thank you, Mr Mayor. There are four items in this motion, two policies that are being updated, which are the subdivision of residential or rural properties. And the second one is our electronic surveillance policy. The second, just a plain removal of policies due to these policies not being required anymore. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Pugsley. Councillor Morgan, would you like to speak?
Yes, just briefly. So the motion that's put to us is to look at updating two policies which require minor updates and also, and adopt that by council and then to seek the ending of two policies that are no longer required, they aren't needed. One of those is the Torrelgan West Interim Infrastructure Development Policy, which is no longer needed due to the abandonment of the C144 Torrelgan West Development Plan overlay. It's not needed in the scope of future planning for Torrelgan West based on the decision council made. And then also the Parking Overlay Collection of Financial Contribution Policy, which again is no longer needed. It's, we have previously removed, the council officers have removed, sorry, the requirement for financial contributions for the waiver of car parking spaces. So it's superfluous to our needs. So happy to support this. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Morgan. Councillors, do I have a speaker against the motion? Speaker for the motion? Any councillor wishing to speak? Councillors, we'll now put it to the vote. All those in favour? Councillor Potter, councillor Pugsley, councillor Lund, councillor Howe, councillor Morgan, councillor Barnes, councillor Campbell and myself, I declare the motion carried unanimously. Councillors, we now move on to item 11, Urgent Business. Do we have any matters of urgent business requiring raising? Nope. Okay councillors, we'll now move on to item 12.1. Bear with me. Councillor Howe, I note you. Councillor Campbell, I note you. Councillor Morgan, I note you. Which is, there's one item in this section, which is item 12.1, Events 2024-2025 Events and Visitor Economy Outcomes, commencing on page 256. Councillor Howe, I noted you.
Oh, happy to move. Thanks, Mr Mayor.
Happy to move. Yep, councillor Campbell, second it. Sorry councillor Morgan, do you wanted to third that motion?
I'm happy to speak on it later.
Okay, perfect. Thank you councillors. Councillor Howe, would you like to speak?
Absolutely. Thanks, Mr Mayor. And it's great, we'll be finishing tonight's meeting, sharing a really good news story. This report, which is presented to be noted, outlines our 2024-25 event and visitor economy outcomes. It's a result that we can all be very proud of. Through the Major Events Attraction Programme, council supported or delivered 23 major events this year, drawing over 27,000 attendees and generating a total economic impact of 23.5 million. To break this down a little further, these events contributed to more than 42,000 bednights across the region. For every $1 council invested, there was an average of $75 return on investment, which is a fantastic result. In addition to these major events, council also supported over 500 community-run events, showcasing the strength and the vibrancy of our local communities. Council continues to deliver the much-loved International Rose Garden Festival, now in its eighth year. The festival attracts over 5,000 visitors annually and delivers a further 1.1 million in economic benefit. So a huge thanks goes to our dedicated events team who work tirelessly to bring these events to life and to the members of the Tourism and Major Events Committee for their ongoing advice and guidance to council. These results show Latrobe City is going from strength to strength as a leading regional destination for major events, which driving local jobs, supporting businesses and delivering real economic outcomes for our community. Thanks, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Howe. Councillor Campbell, do you wish to speak?
Yep. Through you, Mr Mayor. I'm not going to read anything. I'm just going to say, these organisations do a great job. I think all the volunteers, the, you know, like the tennis, bowls, all those people should be proud of themselves for what they bring to Latrobe City. And also, not only that, our local football has been fantastic this year. You know, we had two big events, the grand finals in Churchill Yonar, out of towns, which brought people in from all over Gips Land. I just think this is great and it takes the people in the community all round, plus Latrobe City. You've done a great job guys, I must say. You know, to think eight or nine years ago, we didn't have a lot of these events and now we've got them. So it's great to see. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Campbell. Councillor Morgan, you wish to speak for the motion?
Yes, please. I think it's really wonderful and important that we can acknowledge the incredible financial outcomes and impact that have come from Latrobe City's events and visitor economy. I do note in this report that sporting events are dominating our major events portfolio and that brings a lot of wonderful, wonderful outcomes. But I think it's also important to note, as this report does, that there's a great opportunity for us to further diversify our events portfolio, to bring in a diverse range of other events such as conferences, such as cultural programmes, such as festivals and many, many more things that have an opportunity to showcase the fantastic cultural assets that we have here in Latrobe City, to bring even more diverse range of people into our community and to see those figures continue to rise and just see us as a really, really important regional events and visitor destination. So I'm so pleased that we have this in the agenda and very happy to support this motion.
Thank you councillor Morgan. Councillors, do we have a speaker for the motion? Councillor Lund.
My last one for the night. Thank you, Mr Mayor. So what did I have here? So I'm not going to read out all the events because there's so many of them and they're all detailed in the report, but I would encourage the community to have a look and see the scale of what's being delivered. Overall, this demonstrates the value of council's investment in major events and the contribution they make to the region's economy and profile. But I just wanted to pick up on something councillor Morgan said about diversifying those events. While there are a lot of, there's a lot of investment in sports and we do, are seeing a number of sport events grow, which is amazing. It needs to be about diversification as well and equity in that support of that strategy. So I just want to be mindful of that, that that also strengthens the community we live in, broadens the social connection opportunities, but also speaks to the fabric of our community changing and evolving. So I want to also thank, sincerely thank our council staff who have supported or delivered these events. You should be really very proud of yourself. But not just for the financial impact, but for the way these events have like strengthened our community and made Latrobe a fantastic place to live and work and a fantastic place that people want to come and visit and stay the night and go to our cafes and our, you know, lots of things that we have that I can't think of right now. My brain's just left me. But it is really important to acknowledge that work that the staff have been doing to deliver these programmes. So I sincerely thank you for your amazing work and I look forward to seeing what next year looks like.
Thank you councillor Lund. Councillors, do we have a speaker against the motion? Speaker for the motion? Councillor Pugsley?
I'd just like to say from a first-time councillor that it is actually mind-blowing to see the figures on the paper in front of me, to actually realise how much these events do put into the economy. But it is also amazing to hear the participants that are brought into our economy because of these events through their eyes. Like we all know that the Latrobe Valley is a great place to live, but it's great to see that others are realising it too and bringing their families back. So good job to the officers and the staff that helped put these events together.
Yep. Thank you councillor Pugsley. Councillors, do I have a speaker against the motion? Speaker for the motion? Any councillor wishing to speak? Councillors, we've had speakers, so we'll now put it to the vote. All those in favour? Councillor Potter, councillor Pugsley, councillor Lund, councillor Howe, councillor Morgan, councillor Barnes, councillor Campbell and myself, I declare the motion carried unanimously. Councillors, there's no items for tabling listed on tonight's agenda, so we'll move on to closing the meeting. Meeting, sorry, agenda item 15 is the meeting being closed to the public to consider confidential information under section 66. Sorry councillor Morgan?
I was going to ask, can we have a 15-minute recess to allow councillor Lund to leave and before we go into the closed section?
Yep.
Happy for that to...
I don't need 15 minutes.
No, we'll close it. We'll close the, we'll close the meeting and then it'll be fine. Councillors, under section 66.2A of the Local Government Act 2020, councillors, do I have a motion to conclude the open portion of the meeting and close the meeting to the public to consider confidential items? Councillor Lund, I take it you're moving? Councillors, do I have a second? A councillor Morgan? Councillors, do I have any opposition? Do I have any councillor wish to speak? Councillors, put the motion to the vote. All those in favour? Councillor Potter, councillor Pugsley, councillor Lund, councillor Howe, councillor Morgan, councillor Barnes, councillor Campbell and myself. Councillors, I declare the meeting closed to the public. And to those online and those in the gallery, thank you very much for your attendance. We'll be now closing the meeting to consider confidential items and the live coverage will end. Thank you for attending and we hope to see you next month. Thank you.